All right, everyone will begin, I think, please rise. Okay, let's wait.
United States of America, if you can, yes. We do this all liberty and justice.
Well, thank, thank you.
Okay, Lou Gehrig today.
I feel like I've been trilliquished. Ruining my voice. All right, Kristy, introductory roll call.
Just a suggestion, you might want to hit the new button on the computers.
It's me over here, I'm trying to figure it out.
Okay. President Cook.
I'm here.
Vice President Don.
Here.
Treasurer Fred.
Here.
Secretary Tomlin, absent. Trustee Dayton, absent, trustee Zimmerman.
Present.
And trustee Everard.
Yeah.
Okay, so our condolences go out to Justin Dallas and Justin Dayton, who are dealing with important family matters. Any public comments before we go to the presentations?
Yeah, I don't, how are the hands shown?
You'll see a little hand pop up.
No, we're good.
Okay, so Elizabeth, would you introduce the Chicago Region Carbon Program? Explain how we got here, and we'll take it from there.
Sure, thank you. So, we're going to present to you tonight, as you know, going back this past year, so the district has been looking at different alternative ways that to, not only for revenue, but to restore and do different types of unique projects. The district has been known in the past to try new things and take a, and explore that. And so this is an idea of carbon sequestration that we have brought to the board, discussed that we would explore it further. So what we have in front of you this evening for discussion is that information. And the foundation has also been discussing this project. And so with this opportunity, with tonight, we have Zach from Morton Arboretum, who is with the Chicago Region Carbon Program and the Chicago Regional Tree Initiatives. It's out of Morton Arboretum. And then online, we are also going to have Carbon City Forest Credits. So Donna and Gabe Powers, Donna from the foundation, Gabe Powers from our staff, and then Collins can talk about the project as well, Val Siler. All team members have been involved in hearing about this, to sculpt this. And what we're going to hear about tonight is the opportunity of how the program works and how it's aligned and really what the benefits are and what it means for the district. So, Gabe, come here, anyone?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me okay?
We can. And then Zach is here, so I'm going to stop my screen here so I can pull up Zach's slides. And then I don't know if anyone from Chicago Region Carbon, the Carbon City Forest Credits is online. Are you frozen up, Gabe?
Thank you. It was Mark. Do you see Mark online? I don't see him.
Elizabeth, just explain, as we get into the alphabet soup of CFC, City Forest Credits, and CRTI, who these people are and what role they play in this program.
Right, I'm going to let them do that as we start the presentation. That here, so just give a second, we're switching to their slideshow, we can spin in, and then they will explain. All right, thanks. Go ahead, Zach, thank you. You can explain this since.
Absolutely. Aren't Mark McPherson or Jen Colgan, Tom Hall, they're supposed to be here as well? Or they're not in here, but.
There's Jen on there. Or Ben Jean, Ben Jean, sorry about that.
Well, I'll try calling Mark.
I can get started anyway. So, hi, everybody. My name is Zach Words. I'm the community manager for the Chicago Region Trees Initiative out of the Morton Arboretum. So I will try and avoid the alphabet soup as much as I can, but that definitely is something to consider. All of us have Cs in our name, so apologies for that. So if you could please go to the next slide. Thank you. So, the Chicago Region Trees Initiative is a coalition of organizations around the southern counties surrounding Chicago. So it was founded and currently being led by the Morton Arboretum. I am an Arboretum staff member. But we work with all sorts of municipalities, forest preserve districts, park districts. We have a history of working with conservation districts, three different grant opportunities actually. So hopefully our name is familiar, but if it's not, happy to answer any questions about our organization as well as we go through this. But our goals are to create a more healthy and habitable tree canopy cover. And we're working across the region to do so. Please go to the next slide. So back a couple of years ago, the CRTI, or Chicago Region Trees Initiative, has been around for about 10 years now. And one of the main things that the organization or the group started to do is to write a master plan for our region. Figuring out how to improve our urban forests up until 2050. One of the main things that came out of that work is a need for more funding in our communities. So as was mentioned earlier, carbon crediting is a potential source of revenue. And really, that's one of the main reasons that we have partnered with City Forest Credits to try and bring this program to our area. And so we see this program as an opportunity to increase funding for communities to do things like maintenance of trees, increase tree planting, and otherwise boost up their program because we know for just about every municipality, park district, or forest preserve district in our area, there isn't enough funding to do everything. That needs to be done to make sure that we have a really great resilient forest that we all will receive these benefits from. So increased funding will help us to do things like increase canopy, increase resilience of our urban forest, increase protection there for trees that we have, and also help to increase the quality of life for those that use those urban forests as well. So we've partnered with City Forest Credits, who I'm hoping will be joining us shortly. And they are a nonprofit organization. They're based in Seattle, and they act as a carbon registry. And so they have a protocol that is in place to describe how communities can go through the carbon crediting process to receive credits for the carbon that your trees are sequestering. And so the role of the CRTI is to kind of act as an intermediary to help introduce people to the program, to bring you all in, and then to support you through the application program and credit issuance. City Forest Credits then is the group that would be doing the credit procedures, working with you to make sure that you understand how many credits will be issued based on either land preserved or trees planted. So in the case of the Conservation District, they're looking at a preservation project. So acreage land that will be avoided from potential conversion in the future. So you'll be dealing with our preservation protocol. So just know that there are other options. You may hear information about planting as well, but for this case, we'll be doing the same preservation.
Excuse me, Zach, yeah, right. They are, they're trying to get in, and think they might be on the wrong link. So they're, they're waiting, but they're trying to get in, so they're trying to coordinate, right? Excellent, so they're, they're on their way.
Great, thank you so much. So the program really started in earnest last year, in Maine at least. But before that, we had a pilot program. We had two forest preserve districts that were, went through the crediting process, received credits, and then sold those credits. That's Kendall County Forest Preserve District and Lake County Forest Preserves. Last year, when we kicked off the formal version of this program in our region, the Chicago Region Carbon Program, we had five different organizations participate with six sites, including Kendall County. Again, we had a couple of municipalities do planting projects as well, so the city of Highland Park, the city of Mount Prospect. And we also worked with the Land Conservancy of McHenry County and Natural Land Institute, which is located out towards Rockford. So we are starting to have kind of this portfolio of both preservation projects and planting projects that folks can look at to see not only what your peers are doing, what kind of revenue that they're expecting to bring in, but also learn a little bit about how the process goes for them, ask questions, and help them, and help you kind of connect with your peers to make a really informed decision about whether or not this program is right for you. So our goal is to have an annual, at least an annual call for projects. If there's enough interest, we may increase that in the future. But one of the things we're really keen on doing is having these revenue sources be something that you have access to again and again over time. So we're hoping that communities, as they either purchase land and put it into protection, or they're planting trees, are able to apply to the Chicago Region Carbon Program often, as much as every year or every other year or every third year, so that they can receive these credits on a more regular basis. And my colleagues at City Forest Credits will probably talk more about how that credit issuance happens. So I'm going to leave the details to them. But for preservation projects, almost all of the credits are delivered upfront. Depends a little bit on the size of your project. And so the idea is this continual enrollment as communities are ready. So I know we began conversations with Conservation District last year about some potential sites, and it didn't work out, and that's just fine. So we're really happy to talk about it this year. If now is not the time, we can always talk about it in the future as well. So just wanting to know that this program is something we do not expect to go anywhere. These are long-term commitments. We are also committed to making sure that projects are successful for the long term. So overall goals of the CRCP, or the Chicago Region Carbon Program, are all of the things that I've kind of already mentioned, helping to increase funding, increasing protection for trees, increased preservation of acreage, forested land, helping to use that revenue stream to improve the health of those stands that are being protected, and also putting in place policies and practices that will maintain health and protection of trees over time. So with that, normally I would turn it over to City Forest Credits to dive into the details about the crediting process and give you some more information. But I'm not sure if they're available.
I can see that Gabe is talking with someone right now. I'm assuming that's them, trying to get them the right link.
Okay. If it's appropriate, I can take a couple of questions at this point. If there's anything really high level, please know that we will really get into some of the information about how the crediting process works. I can answer some of those right away, but if you have any questions on the Morton Arboretum or Sierra's guys' involvement in the process and partnership with City Forest Credits, I'd be happy.
If you could give an example of the project in this area, kind of, to scope and how, how it went about it and what the results were.
Sure. So there's a couple of land trusts and forest registries, like I mentioned, that have done this project for the last couple of years. So one example is the Crowley Oaks property, which is about 50 acres. And so with that process, there was a, I apologize if I'm getting this wrong, but it was the McHenry County.
Land Conservancy.
Yes, Land Conservancy, thank you, that put that property. So they recently acquired it, and they knew they wanted to put protections on it, but with uncrediting work, they're putting an additional level of protection to that site. So with the preservation projects, it's based on what we call avoided conversion. So these are all sites that are at risk for being turned from a forest into something else. So a lot of them are either zone, agricultural sites that, you know, in theory, the forest could be removed for agricultural uses, or they're in areas where there's high development pressure. And so in that case, the group, sorry. The group put in an additional protection for that, and they were issued credits. I have a lot of the additional information on the specifics of the numbers, which I would be happy to give you, but I don't have it. So we have to pull that up and give you some ideas on dollar amounts. There are, every year, the last two years, we've done a national sale of the credits. And so all of the communities that have issued credits have chosen credits into a pool that's sold collectively. And in 2021, the two forest, the credits then received about $300,000 in funding between the two of them, the credits that were issued for their projects. So it's really important, as we work through this, to make sure that the numbers make sense for you financially. And so we do have some minimums, which the project that we're talking about today far exceeds. We're looking for at least 10 acres of land preserved or 500 trees planted. And I think the acreage this time around is over 100, right?
It's, so the acreage that would qualify is about 30.
So you all will be well into that range, yes?
All right, is that, can I ask a question? The board has discussed the issue of carbon credits and been trying to educate ourselves. So I was very pleased when this came forward. The thing that surprised me a little bit is that there is a, I believe, a June 2nd sort of decision date. Whenever I'm in a situation of being sold something and someone tells me that, well, you better sign now because, you know, the deal is going to disappear after that. If, you know, the caution goes up. So I was very happy to hear you say that you're planning to be around for a long time. And if this timing doesn't work out, there will be other programs. But explain to me why there is a June 2nd date for this, for the way this is structured.
Yeah, and that's a great question. So I mentioned a couple of things that I'll bring up again here. One is that there is an intention for an opportunity for communities that are issued credits to sell those as a bundle in an aggregated sale. So all of the urban carbon credit programs that happened around the United States last year, for example, almost all of them put their credits together in that bundle. So we try and keep everybody in a cohort. So the application due date is there so that we can keep the crediting process for all the communities every year on schedule, so that they're all issued their credits at the same time every year. So it is true that we will be doing this again next year, which is great. But I will mention that we have grant funding from the Donnelly Foundation right now, which is supporting preservation projects. So we are funding that with potentially bringing crews to actually do an onsite carbon quantification for you as opposed to the other method, which would be using some elementary equations to look at basically what you would expect based on the forest type, using a chart to determine what kind of carbon is on the site. So we may be able to fund a crew to actually come out, do a more nuanced assessment. And last year, for all of the preservation projects that we were able to fund that assessment for, they received more credits than they would have if they would have gone with the model.
And the June 2nd date, just to underscore, so this is a preservation project, and so there is a time allotment. So the foundation with Camp Lakota, which is where we're looking at, they will have had the property for two years, so that June 2nd date for us to, to make that, otherwise that property will not qualify.
Well, explain to me why there is this two-year ownership or control requirement for the property to, to qualify.
Absolutely.
I mean, we haven't committed any of these carbon units to anybody else. So whether we, we've owned it for 30 days or 30 years, I'm not sure I understand.
Right. So a lot of it goes back to that idea that these credits are issued based on that avoided conversion. So if, for example, a land trust would require a parcel and hold on for, to it for 10 years and then try and do a carbon crediting program on it, there could be a perception that that land really has no risk of that forest being removed. So City Forest Credits is very conservative about their protocol. They want to make sure that everybody has very good optics around it, that everyone's very confident that those credits are legitimate, and that they are what you can kind of call a fresh credit, which is also something that is more attractive to the corporations that are interested in purchasing those credits. So they have put that two-year limit on the time between when that property is acquired and when the end of its ability to be credited at first.
I don't mean to dominate this, but that raises a question internally. I mean, the foundation and the district have acquired this property. Clearly, this property is not at risk for development.
So maybe it's going to qualify.
Well, I guess that's my question. Are we, are we being absolutely forthright by saying, oh, we have to get here under the gun, when there isn't any chance that we're going to do anything with this property other than preserve? So I, there's a little gamesmanship here, and I want to be sure that, that the staff and the board, you know, understand, you know, the background. I'm all for, I'm taking advantage of the carbon credit market. I just want to be sure that we do it with our eyes open.
So with Kendall and Lake County, they have two preservation projects. And it was a newly acquired property that they acquired in two years. And had they not purchased the property, it was at risk, correct? So had the foundation not stepped in with the partners and acquired Camp Lakota, it would have been at risk of potential losing the forest and losing. They were able to do so, but their window, clearly to us, it's not, that's why it has to be done before it transfers. It doesn't, they're transferring it, but it's their owner, they have the property right now.
Could have went to an RV park.
I know, I understand that, but I just, well, okay, all right. So there is this requirement, we meet the requirement. To me, it seems a little bit artificial. Once we have control of it, it's in no danger. And.
But that's just one of the.
All right.
Right, right.
All right, go ahead.
Right. So this is like for 40 years, if I'm.
That's correct.
Okay, so sign up 5,000 trees. That's kind of how it works, right? To get so much per tree or whatever.
In, in the case of preservation projects, it's an acreage. And then for planting projects, it would be the number of trees planted.
Right, so there's, you know, trees that have, so you sign up so many acres, and all of a sudden you get this elm disease, or you get oak wilt, or you get, you know, there's some gypsy moth or something, half the trees die. So that one.
Yeah.
And you're paid upfront, right?
Correct. So that's a really great question, and one that we get a lot. So in terms of tree loss, there are, we turn that reversal on the agreement. So if you lost a number of trees, City Forest Credits does maintain or retain some of the credits that would be issued to your site as kind of a little bit of a bank in case something happens. And there are two types of reversals. There are avoidable reversals, where that tree loss is because of either your gross negligence or an intentional decision that you made. So say you, you want to credit 50 acres and you decide to turn 20 of them into an RV park. That's your decision, and so you are responsible for those credits. And in that case, you would have to pay back those credits. There are unavoidable reversals, like what CFC turns acts of God, so tornadoes, wildfires, things that you have no control over. They maintain a pool of credits from all of the projects that they credit as kind of an insurance bank against that kind of thing. So if there was a major disaster, you lost a few acres of your project, there, and it wasn't your fault in any way, that is not going to be called against you, and you won't be responsible for those credits.
Because I see they have like a 20%, something. Don't they have like a, you know, you can lose up to certain percentage, then it doesn't.
Yes. So for planting projects, it is 20%. For preservation projects, I believe it's 10%.
So everybody knows Mr. Nick Pearson has drawn a meeting. He's available. One, one quick question. So I think the foundation planted 730 oak trees that last year in something called Oaktoberfest. Is that big enough to qualify, or?
It, it would be. So with the planting projects, the minimum that we look for is 500 trees. We do allow communities to aggregate the last 36 months of planting. So for this year, for example, communities are allowed to put in trees that they've planted up since in July of 2021. However, with the planting projects, usually the more trees you put into them, the more credits you're going to get, and the more attractive that credit stream is going to be for folks. So depending on your goals, we've seen Highland Park and Mount Prospect, for example, had about 1,000 and 1,200 trees respectively in their projects. And so if we see less than about 500 trees in a project, the numbers just don't make sense. And then as you can increase from there, the static state status, except you're receiving more credits during those issuances, and you can sub round for more.
I could ask you a question. Is there a spot market for carbon credits?
What do you mean by a spot market?
Well, so I think in terms of the futures market or commodities, and you sell a crop or a credit, whatever you want to call it, for delivery at a point in the future. And in this case, it could be 40 years in the future. You are paid a current price. Well, this question has two parts. Can that credit be resold, let's say in five years? The market for carbon credits has gone up. We've received whatever we're going to receive. Can the person or the agency that bought that credit resell it at that point?
So in, in theory, yes. So the credits, it's very important to note that the credits are yours to do with what you like. The Morton Arboretum or City Forest Credits are going to be able to sell the credits for you. However, we do try and connect communities with that national sale, which is run by a third party attorney. So in theory, you could sell your credits to an organization that could hold them and then resell them. Or you could sell them to an organization that you know is going to retire those credits from the market. And it's important to note that the market that all of these credits are sold on is the voluntary carbon market. So none of the corporations that you would be looking to sell these credits for are ones that are mandated to buy carbon offsets. These are folks that are choosing to do so because they have their own internal desire to reduce their carbon or offset their emissions.
But I guess the point is that there is a market, and therefore there are people who might look at this as a, a chance to trade. In other words, buy at one price, sell at another price. So I, I'm trying to wrap my head around this.
Right.
I was very happy to hear that the City Forest Credit is a not-for-profit registry rather than a broker. They do take 10% if I'm, if I read, if, if I read and understood what I think I read. Am I correct about that? Because they, there's a 10% vote, administrative charge, commission, whatever.
So CFC does have these, but I would love to let Mark answer that question about the specific amounts that they require for those.
Perfect. And does your organization assess a charge for the services that it provides?
At this time, no. The Morton Arboretum does not ask anything of the communities. We just are here to help folks hopefully get that revenue stream, and our goal is to help grow the urban forest.
Thank you. Does it, I, I don't mean to be.
No, it's, it's a really wonderful question, yeah.
Well, that's, I, I'm sort of, well, I don't know that I'm skeptical. But again, there's this issue of a deadline. And for us, this deadline is really this month, you know?
But staff thinks they can beat that deadline, correct?
Well, the discussion we have, it's the foundation that is going to be the entity with the transaction. We'll get into and talk about what that agreement was with the foundation on the future transfer. But the specifics, we want the board, because we're going to be the, the end result, as it's been 40 years, it's been a transfer class. But we'll talk about specific details, but I guess with Mark here online, I don't know, if you can help me to address. I pulled your picture up here so we can see you on the screen.
Good. Yes, I can hear you all, and, and I've been listening carefully to the last maybe 10 minutes or so.
So the question of fees, I look at my notes and I have 11% CFC fees. Can you explain that, please?
Yes, so we have two types of fees. We have sort of hard cost fees, which are application fees, verification fees, a small fee to open an account in our registry database of credits. Those fees are due early in the project, but we have tried to keep the bulk of our fees till later, after you sell the credits. So when you sell the credits, we charge a credit issuance fee that is about 10%. It's either a minimum, like this year, it's $4 a credit, or 10%, whichever is greater. So you have the hard cost fees. Our application fee, I think, is, gosh, Zach, you're going to have to remind me. This year, it's maybe 3,000 for a preservation project. And then verification fees, those are. And then verification fees, those are the more upfront fees. And then when you sell the credits, we charge that four dollar fee or ten percent, whichever is greater.
Are there any annual recurring fees? Over this forty year period?
No. No, there are fees if you, so. If you take good care of the forest, it will grow. And when forests are healthy and grow, they add biomass, which is carbon. And you can credit the additional growth in the trees. So the credits we issue now are based on quantification at this point in time. Twenty years from now, you're going to have growth if if the forest is healthy. You can credit that that growth over twenty years. At that time, you have to do a re-quantification of the of the carbon and get that third party verified. And then we issue more credits. So you have to pay a verification fee then. And our normal credit issuance fee, which is the ten percent. But there are no annual, there are no annual recurring fees.
So in a properly managed forest over forty years. And let's say it's a mature forest. Are we going to get eighty percent of our revenue with the initial sale of credits? And then over forty years, see a twenty percent additional. Um. Increase in carbon storage that can also be monetized? I I mean, just give me an idea of.
Yeah. I will. Yeah, so the general default. Growth rate is two percent a year. So you get roughly two percent growth in the carbon stock. What that means is, yeah, something like eighty, eighty-five percent of your credits are issued upfront and then you may get another. Fifteen, twenty percent, depending on the on the quantification in the future. But the other factor that comes into play is the price of the credits. The the predictions are, and again, who knows? But the predictions are that the demand for natural land-based credits, i.e. forest credits. Credits from agricultural projects. Predictions are the demand is going to outstrip supply, so the credit prices are going to go up quite a bit. Now, again, that's totally unpredictable. It's a market. Markets can go up and they can go down. But predictions aren't goes up. Let me just say, we are a nonprofit organization. We are not in this to make money for ourselves. We've kept our fees low. We've deferred the credit issuance fee until you actually sell the credits. To try to reduce the risk for you. So this, we're not doing this to. Make money for ourselves. And let me say one other thing, too. We are not trying to sell you anything here. We want successful projects with people that are motivated and capable and want to do it. No, I I would never want to twist anyone's arm to do this. Which relates to your your concern about the deadline. So if if you if you'd like, I can give two minutes on the deadline issue. That, I don't know if that will assuage your concerns, but. I'm happy to give you a couple of minutes on that if that's how you want to spend the time.
Well, I. I'd like to hear about the deadline. Yes, sir. And I appreciate your. Your frankness and your honesty and and um. Uh, I think we're all on the same side here, but I'm adopting a little bit of a skeptical. Approach, just to sort of stimulate um the conversation.
No, no apologies for that. You should. You're you're, in my mind, you're doing your job. So uh I I welcome these kind of conversations. And and we we generally have explanations for what we do. Um, so there is method in what may look to be madness. Um. So here's the reason for the two, the two-year period, which is. You have to look, you have to imagine a piece of land that is there. It's in a natural state. It's forested. Its zoning allows development of some sort and some entity comes in and wants to conserve that, preserve it in its natural state. So. We look at the parcel at that point in time. For you, that was almost two years ago. That was in June twenty twenty-one. That's when you essentially took a property that was at some risk of development and you took it out of that pool. So that's when we make, that's when we apply all of our eligibility tests to you. Now, why do we have a two-year period? We have a two-year period for two reasons. One, it's stretched out to two years. Because a lot of land conservation deals are long and complicated and time-consuming. Many involve multiple parties. So there are many situations where you may have the entity that's doing the initial purchase. Who's like a holding pool or holding party. For the ultimate owner. And I know in your case, you have the foundation, you have the district. Well, that happens all over, where you'll have a trust for public land. That will be the initial entity to buy the land. And then. They want to transfer that to like a governmental entity. So we we credit a project like that involving a municipality in Washington State. And same thing, trust for public land came in, they bought the initial. Property when it was at risk and they had to act quickly because there was a developer who literally had a plat ready to go on the subdivision. So they acted quickly, they conveyed it to a city, but it took a while for the city to put together all its financing for that. So. Those entities, they don't want to deal with the carbon crediting right away because they're not even sure they can complete the acquisition as planned. They have to get grants. They've got to put their financing stack together to do that. So we allow projects two years from the date that it is acquired for a conservation purpose. To submit their carbon application. That gives them time to complete any final transfers or whatever that they want to do. Now, why two years? Why not five years? Why not ten years? Well, that's the optics issue that that Zach mentioned, which is. If it's acquired and if it's been sitting in a conservation status for ten years. To us, that doesn't look good. That looks like the exactly the issue you presented, which is it's already preserved. And it's going to stay preserved. So we want projects that are fresh. And just so you know, I talked to Ed Collins at least two years ago about carbon crediting. And he mentioned the the Boy Scout camp. And so, you know, we said. That's great. That project probably is eligible. We didn't run it through a rigorous eligibility screen. But I said, that's, that project is probably eligible and. Once it's acquired for conservation by the district and I wasn't aware of the foundation operating at that time, but I said, once it's acquired. You're going to have a clock that starts ticking. So you you got to just remember that. So that's the reason for the two years. It's twofold. It's to allow projects time to get the project where they want it to be. And ready to actually do the work to get the carbon crediting done. And the work is not enormous, but it's it's significant. It's not simple. And it's also designed to keep that carbon project close in time to when it was acquired for conservation purposes.
Are there any programs that would allow us? To um. Use the wooded land that we've owned for ten or twenty years. Uh, as a source of. Carbon credits. I mean, I I understand what you've said about. The logic behind this. Newly purchased, but. Reality is we have a, we have more trees that we've owned for a longer period of time. And it would be helpful in our budgeting. And. If we could tap. Um. That as a as a funding source.
Yes, yes. So uh there are, there are different kinds of. Protocols, carbon protocol. Carbon protocols are really the rulebooks that projects have to follow to earn the credits. Our preservation protocol is designed for at-risk parcels that are then preserved and preserved for at least forty years or a hundred years. A lot of people just do in perpetuity, uh, you know, easements, deed restrictions, covenants. So ours is a so-called avoided conversion. You're you're preventing that property from being converted to a developed use. So that that can work for like uh the Lakota Boy Scout camp. Or other parcels that have some threat and you're acquiring them to take them out of that threat and you're going to preserve them. There is a whole separate kind of protocol that's used in rural carbon forestry. Or rural forestry, and that's called improved forest management. So-called IFM or improved forest management. Those protocols are designed for standing forests. And and I'll uh it's, this is complicated. I'm going to just give you a one-minute. Description of how that protocol works. Essentially, that's a protocol where you take the forest as it is today. You have to quantify the carbon in it. And then you have to undertake certain improved forest. Practices. You have to, you have to do additional forest management. And if you do that, and if that increases the biomass and the carbon, you can credit that growth in the carbon stock. So that would be the opportunity for you on the existing forest that you have.
Thank you. That's really, that's really helpful. And I'm sure Ed knows this already and. And maybe he's told me and I've forgotten, but I think that distinction is 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 very meaningful and it would. And perhaps we will task our. Natural resource department to try to figure out. Whether we could enhance our management practices so that we could take advantage of that. And is there a? An agency that? You deal with that um works with this improved forest management protocol?
There are, there are a number of for-profit carbon developers that do that. And there are carbon registries. So again, we're the registry. So we we administer the protocols and we issue the credits. We don't develop projects ourselves. In in fact, if you do a project, you would be the developer. But in the rural forestry, the forest owner usually hires a for-profit carbon developer to come in and. And do this work for them and tell them what they need to do on the land to earn the credits. The only challenge you may find, and I don't know what your land area is that you have that's forested. But generally, those those IFM projects in rural forestry, their minimum acreages are usually like five, ten thousand acres. So they they they're working at a large scale, large volume.
Well, um. Once I get on a roll, I could, I lose track of time. This has been very. Interesting and I think helpful. Let me ask. The other board members uh or staff. Uh, or John, our county liaison, if they have any questions for you and your colleague from Morton.
Okay, can I just interject one quick other comment?
Sure.
Which is, uh, we just found out actually a couple of weeks ago that we have been endorsed. By an organization in Geneva, Switzerland, that is the premier endorsing body of. Carbon registries. So it's called the International Carbon Reduction and Offset Alliance. Uh, this is very fresh news. I'm not sure we even posted on their website yet. But um this is a pretty significant thing because. I think they've only endorsed. Maybe eight or ten. Independent registries like us in their entire history. So they've endorsed the four big carbon registries in the US. I think we may be one of the other. Maybe there only, there's one other. Registry that's in the United States. So we've just joined pretty elite company there. And and that's really because we have tried to set up a program that is conservative, transparent and and high integrity.
Um, my last question is um. For us to complete the paperwork. I'm expecting we'll need to have our attorney review it. Um, and. How complicated a process is this? Is this a two-page document or is this a? You know, it's something the size of a phone book.
Well, uh, good question. We have a project implementation agreement. That the project operator has to sign with us. That's about a seven-page document. And I will tell you, I created that. I I'm I'm a lawyer, so I practiced law for fifteen years. My law practice is all in. Land use, property issues. I represented cities and counties in their comprehensive planning and their their natural lands designations under zoning. Um, and all kinds of easement issues. Uh, but I looked at the project implementation agreements from the big registries and they were telephone books. And and monuments to overlawyering, in my opinion. So I tried to create something that that was actually workable, had everything that's needed, but. Didn't have an accretion of a thousand different provisions that had been built up over time. So it's about a seven, eight-page document.
Thank you. Let me ask Elizabeth, is Andrew Payne on the call?
He is, yes.
Andrew, do you have any questions for your colleague?
I do not. Uh, I'd be happy to take a look at the agreement, but um based on the description, I'm uh, it it sounds like it's in pretty good shape, so. Um, but yeah, I'm I'm happy to take a look at it whenever, if that's the direction you guys decide to go.
Thank you.
And I think the other thing to to note. Within this process of the application, um, there is a time once they accept it before we have to get into the final agreement, which we give. Council, of course, from the foundation and ours to make sure we're comfortable with that. And then. The other side of comfort that I do have is that it worked in the state of Illinois. With other units of local government, particularly to a forest preserve district in Lake County, Kendall County. And then municipalities. So again, they're different for a conservation district, but I would have to hope and lean that. Some of the things that their attorneys representing those organizations and things that our council would be looking at as well.
Well, okay, a- any uh additional questions, comments? Um. I'm very appreciative of your time and expertise and likewise with Zach.
Uh, I I wish I could be there in person. Uh, in fact, I was out in March for a visit and Zach and I talked to some show people. I I wish I'd had the opportunity to be there live. We could have had a a a full Q and A or whatever, whatever you all need. And I'm happy to talk offline with anyone. There's.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Want to be comfortable.
I'm gonna take advantage of that comment. Just to say to the staff that. The board wishes we had had this opportunity in March. And then we would have avoided this question of. Sort of a last-minute decision. But I think you provided. Um, just. You've answered all of our questions and and. This has been handled in a. Very satisfactory way on short notice. Then, so I appreciate it. Thank you. Rest of the trustees do also. So I think we need to move ahead with our our uh. Agenda. And uh.
Would you like to, um, are you excusing me?
Yes.
Is there any action we need to take from the personal?
So not tonight, and we'll we'll discuss their agreement with the foundation that will happen later this evening in post-session. And then if all is well, then we will have an action item on the regular agenda on Tuesday night. To uh agree. To support the foundations, so that we have.
So if any questions come up with our further discussions, um, this evening, we may. Direct those a question, those questions to you and if you could give us a timely response.
Absolutely. Yep. Thank you very much for your interest. Um, and I'm I'm available. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
So and I want to say that I. Elizabeth. Brought this to my attention last week and I think she did a very nice job of bringing this all. Together with representatives of City Forest uh. Credits and um and the Morton Arboretum. Here this evening for our. Education and entertainment.
That goes to the staff when you say, hey, we need representation, they they rose to the.
So um. Going to new business, um. Six point one review of. Regular meeting agenda items for next week. Um. Everyone's had an opportunity to look at that and. If there's anything you want to pull or if you have any questions. Now's the time or now is the time you might. Bring those matters up. Otherwise, do we need to vote on this?
No, not tonight. The only thing I want to share that in your packets. Uh, based on uh Secretary Thomas not being here this evening and infested Dayton. And as well as just the process, because the PCN committee is a little bit new, um, in your package is a revised. Agenda uh for next Tuesday night, and we will repost that if there are no further changes to this, but basically. It's just how we're flowing. So tonight, we'll go to executive session. Uh, we will not be doing my review tonight. That will go into Tuesday night. Um, you will also see that, so I moved that um to have an executive session next Tuesday. In addition, um, we will likely done with our public hearing process. As we form, we'll recess our meeting into the standing committee. We'll have the meeting and come back into the regular meeting. And then go into executive session. So that just maps that process. Because we have to post that as a, basically a separate meeting like we do in public hearings. So this, this meets that. Uh, required condition. Okay, so that's just how we lay that out. And then I also. Um, moved twelve eleven, uh, which was part of. You know, going to be taken as part of the disarianial committee. So we'll, during the consent agenda. You will approve the resolution, the form. you will approve the resolution, the form of the committee, the ballots appointees, and then we'll go to the procedure.
Bye, guys, crossing the
Yes.
So next up, uh, Elizabeth, are we um going to go into the semi-old committee?
Yes. I would. So the requirement beyond the Board of Trustees and myself, uh, as the executive director to be on the committee is the requirement of two members, two residents of the public to be present. And so um I did uh look through a variety of ways and approaches and the minimums requirements to whoever we select um to qualify for a forum, I mean, the majority of a forum presence. So I count towards forum now, not just the Board of Trustees. Our resident appointees will account towards forum. And so in, we want to be open, transparent, but we want to be efficient since this is an efficiency committee. Um, and so um I have looked at a variety of names. I talked with President Cook. I have two, potentially three uh names that we could look at, but two that I have had a conversation with. First one uh being Elise Livingston. Elise is a member of our foundation board. She's out of Richmond. She's a new member of our foundation board, so she is not as familiar with us and uh feel that that would be a great representation. The other individual uh would be Tom Palmer out of Huntley, Illinois. Tom Palmer is the former executive director, retired of the Huntley Park District. Brings a lot of process and procedures, you know, obviously into, to local government and would represent that area of the community. So those are two recommendations. I also had a recommendation that we could look. I mean, I've got a variety of other names to look at, but I, since the requirement is two, another name uh could potentially be, and I have not spoken with them, but I wanted to go through this evening. Uh, if the board wanted, you know, additional parties, then I could bring them to some other names as well. So I'll leave it at that. That's the two. Um, and just, I guess, to start off, what is the board feel? As a necessity, the requirement is two. Um, do we need more than two?
I'm comfortable with two, right? I'm better in smaller groups.
It would try to be efficient, so that I have
Right. So I'm is, if these individuals demonstrate a willingness to participate and and their schedules allow them to participate, then I think two is sufficient number. If one of these individuals says, you know, I, I really can't um promise anything, well then maybe we should look for an alternative.
It's everybody.
Just met Elise a few times, but very impressive, I think she
And then as part of the process, the meetings are public. So the general public has the opportunity to be present. And then there is a survey process as part of that. So the attendees that attend, there'll be a survey thing that everybody will still. So there's a way to engage others. And so the first meeting, if this is good, then what we will do is I will communicate with the two appointees and have them join us on Tuesday evening as we convene for the first meeting, and then you'll have the names of the resolution that'll be advanced. And then the other piece is to require the chairman of the D.C.N. committee would be in President Cook. Um, would like to have it be the board president, current seated, and then future.
But I'm gonna pass this buck to whoever succeeds me. Uh, so I thought, um, that was one way to deal with this question. But I, and I think, Elizabeth, it's fair to say, fair to say, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that and I look at this as like a homework assignment. We're gonna, we're gonna do a good job, um. But we're basically fulfilling a requirement that's been placed on us. And the agenda for these meetings is something that the staff is gonna generate. And then the attendees to the meeting are going to have somewhat of a script to follow. And if, if there are questions or comments that are relevant, those were gonna be included in the minutes and, and so forth. We're not making this up, sort of. They know.
Yes, so the, the goal would be, at our first meeting, we will define the scope. One of the areas, and I've got some general ideas, I put that in the summary, and uh areas that we wanna be looking at and things that we will pull that information together to present to the committee. And then the committee will evaluate that. Are there other things that maybe we've missed or things that we should be thinking about? And then we'll make, then the staff will go back, we'll work to prepare a report. And then, and then we'll present that to the committee and then we'll approve the report and then we'll be able to make so.
Any questions? And anyone have any questions about this? I'm trying to make it more
So, this commit, this past is about executive words. Don't have too much bad, do it.
It's like a self-analyse of, and for some way we can improve our operation.
How do we work with other units of government? What other intergovernmental arrangements do we have? Are we doing joint purchasing? Are we doing it? How do we work with non-pro? I mean, there's just a lot of efficiencies, which I think the districts as we pull out, we did this with the county on a study with Macag and um obviously Thalen, and kind of the work that we did was to map out a lot of these areas. So there is a lot of shared services that go on, and so we'll highlight that. And maybe there'll be something that'll come out that we haven't thought of yet. That's an opportunity for us to look at. Um, but you know, it's just how you do the pyramid, how you share, you know. Uh, just a few examples. I mean, we do a lot of cooperation with schools. We do, we help, you know, Marengo with the salt. We have arrangements with the snowmobile clubs that manage our trails. We work with the, you know, so there's a lot of shared service activities, both government and non-profit.
Will, will this committee meet with every monthly meeting or every other month? Or what, how do you envision the, the time?
How many meetings?
I envision, we have to have three. That's the requirement. And so we'll have the first one on Tuesday, which will scope. And hopefully identify the areas that we wish to look at. Then have another meeting maybe in the fall. And we'll pull back together with everything we found. At, at that meeting, we'll determine, do we need to go look for some more stuff? Are we ready to have staff prepare the report or whatever we need to do? And then at the bare minimum, at the maximum, that you have at the minimum three meetings, come back together and approve the report. So that would likely, my thought, this is eighteen months that's required to complete the work. I'd like to see if we can do it in twelve.
I think while Pat is still around, we wanna get this Well, thank, thank you, Elizabeth, for our Keep the troops in line, I'm sure. Should we go to seven point O, the executive director's report and and perhaps bring us up to date on the Lions Prairie and Marsh feasibility study.
Yes, so thank you. Uh, President Cook was in attendance. We didn't have much of an attendance at our meeting, and I just wanna compliment staff and, and Dave Powers and our marketing team uh for facilitating the
It was excellent. It was an excellent presentation. And so I, I'm enthusiastic about, about the presentation and very pleased that Hayes and associates uh sort of looked at this, well, what if we don't do anything? What, or what harm can come if we do something? So it's a complicated um issue, and they seem to be looking at it in, in very objective way. So I hope public gets involved, um, interested parties get involved. If you haven't had a chance to look at that presentation, I think it's available online and very interesting.
And so with being that there was no attendance or very limited, we felt and we heard that other groups didn't disseminate the information on their end. And we had pushed it out. It was in newspaper. It was on social media. It was sent out to different stakeholder groups. But just, this is an opportunity. We want to ensure that it's known that the district wants public feedback and that we wanna share and get their input. So they have, we extended the date to June nineteenth. Uh, the comments, open comments can be made on the plan, and then um we'll wrap that phase up. But again, just wanted to make sure that that's a clear the information uh and let everyone know that that's there and information's on our, our website. The second other area that uh I wanted to update and I had sent out was the dates of the June meeting and the November meeting. We, the Thursday night, like we are for pow, and then on the third Thursday, and then the weekend following on that Tuesday, we have our regular meeting. And I cannot find any notes to in June and November. We skipped a week, so it's not immediately following Tuesday. And so that's not a problem. We can leave it as prepared um for just trying to figure out December, we moved up earlier. We always do January earlier because we have a timeframe on our budget process. And December, we wanted to avoid all the winter holidays that occurred during that time. So if the board wants to change or leave it alone, I just bring that up to a flag. It is off of our normal Tuesday, Thursday, but I couldn't recall it because of Thanksgiving. Uh, June nineteenth was a holiday. It shouldn't affect anything. And I know we didn't, I was saying that, my wedding anniversary's on June twentieth, and I know we didn't move it off that, it's my wedding anniversary. Um, so it's to the discretion of the board.
I'm available either day, so if, I looked at my calendar and either day is fine with me, um.
So that instead of the twentieth, twenty-seventh on June, it would be June twentieth? And then the November one is
Sixteenth and the twenty eighth. Be the twenty-first instead of twenty.
I think the only thing in November, I think in terms of Thanksgiving, if that, you know, interferes in some way with people's travel plans or preparations. I won't be here.
And we, and we don't have a new trustee yet appointed, um, but it would be, it would follow our regular routine on the Tuesday, the immediate following, I mean, Thursday and then the immediate following.
That's what it, what's gonna be on November.
If we move it. Right now, it has it on the twenty-eighth in November, which is a week after Thanksgiving. It's a little bit more buffer time and um And it was nothing to do with our budget timeline, which I'll talk about next, but um all the packet stuff is put together already, because you're gonna have it for the house. So there's still, we couldn't find any reason why.
Well, ma, uh, well, let me make a suggestion that if it's okay with the folks who are here, we move the June date. But we wait until you can talk to Linda and Ray about that November date.
One, just one, I mean, I know the district liaison, but did you say it's twenty, it's with your anniversary?
That's my wedding anniversary, but that's okay. I'm usually
Okay, I mean, it, this is, it, it doesn't mean anything to you.
I appreciate that, but no, I'm fine with the twentieth. It, it just out of the patterning, and I would, I would acquiesce to, you know, Justin Thomas and Fustig Gayton, that there was a reason. And, and again, being Bill, that's your last meeting, and I just wanna make sure, and, and of course, we want you to be here.
I'll be here on the, on either date, and uh, so it doesn't have anything to do with my schedule, and if we wanna uh, perhaps, Elizabeth, you could send a note to Linda and Ray and ask them if they have a conflict uh with these possible changes. Just to take them into consideration. And then just send out a missive that says, this is, this is what we expect to become.
Right. And then we can update that, of course, and then that forwards. I will do that. I appreciate the conversation. The other thing in your packet is a draft of, and thank you, uh, we, dialogue, our Director of Finance and Administration prepared this, and this is, it just seemed like we finished our budget for this year. We start that process all over again. So what you have are some draft uh timing of information of what the process will look like for the upcoming year. This will be advanced to you to approve formally at the June meeting, but I wanted to give everybody time to take a look at that and, and so you have that and anything that comes up or you flag, let us know, and uh before we finalize that next month. And for fog, uh, the other last piece that I had was for fog. Um, there is a meeting uh with the village of Algonquin. The I D's and that, I sent that out. If anybody wants to attend, it's Wednesday, May thirty-first in the evening. Uh, RTA will be present, so if anybody wants to go. That's all I have.
Well, if no one has any additional comments, um, I think it's time then that we um move into executive session. And so I'll move to go to executive session. Okay, and the second, please.
Second.
Second. Uh, and the role, please.
President Brett?
Yes.
Vice President Down?
Yes.
Cusie Zimmerman?
Yes.
Cusie Everard?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
President Brett?
Yeah.
Cusie Everard?
Yes.
Vice President Down?
Yes.
Yeah. Now, motion to adjourn?
You bet.
Okay. Uh, I'll move. Second is by Lloyd.
All right, Vice President Down?
Yes.
Cusie Zimmerman?
Yes.
President Brett?
Yes.
Uh, Cusie Everard?
Yes.
Yes.